Tial 9 day, 9 day ra 11 regular session. House of Delegates ra 11 norbíl ákululawu, amnámogodongun mora ordér. N'gítar bekladh mada. Odo tél ékli bol ádha. Bol ádma gadegnu wera, wera domu ra ordero business era altutawu. Clerk, gámu angorol kól.
Speaker Anastasio.
Oi.
Delegate Aruram.
Oi.
Delegate Gibbons Junior.
Oi.
Delegate Culibert.
Oi.
Floor Leader Kanai. Delegate Gomson.
Oi.
Delegate Marino.
Matiam.
Speaker Ngiraywet. Delegate Ngiratka Kanai.
Oi.
Delegate Ongidoble.
Oi.
Delegate Otobdo.
Oi.
Delegate Traalulko. Delegate Sinzak.
Oi.
Delegate Solaplay. Delegate Talley.
Oi.
Delegate Umetaro.
Oi.
Mr. Speaker, nganyak kórung.
Seegidan ngarya kórung me ah, delegate ra ablurorom téra va, a house of delegate telmora o bagela president, lmo der ah US Congress, hiri ngiré laha pakt of free association. Mong exuse de ah, a floor leader ma, ah delegate ra blu blu lioa, exuse ngarya praor kamit metutir, mo deharsu ilmei. Solá eh, eh in lieu of that de ah, delegate ra ngayangala mo, mo take over el acting floor leader. Tí regal mbrenasulira, arbekl delegate simosu edemé relal, session relaltutawu, eh bogum térgi dedo, welkámra ah, kaligirigi da delegate ra ngiwal, na mora mbri gélil mouten, mnara ah, aporsalano mbroléla dedo welkámri ngilmei. Tí regal dedo welkámra, delegate ra blu blu ngayourun, tí regal, mlo ofaylané mo mesaran gélé, eh mnalar mouten mei. Yákmbrenasulira me solá dedo, petókangara ulawol, toguni sel budget ra, ah fiscal year 2024. Odo, kidara adra house relaltaima, oguk mongorara budget ra 2024. Mong madengiye delegate ra namblo uing, ah unified angargi deda, may gérrogu ilobongel, eh supplementalé mndí regal dingara houseum. Oi. Komal mongil de ah, lomés ayéle somi, may gél solá blu ad, eh solá eh mongwansire ra budget. Dogés ataimé namo, otén 15 egida ngarya petókul, gembeldí ma sánduborni. Odi traga floor leader, delegate ra ngayangal bon take overé, mso besa floor leader relaltutawu.
Vice Speaker, solá rata alé malwin tutal mor gau ma arbekladh, dolmón mra atsindargi dedo mbanagárseel item 4, adoption ra journals, maqmovul adopt ra, adopt day journal ra 11th special session, eh direkal lobongela 58 journals, journal ra 11th special session.
Seegidan motion na seconded, mra shél, el, journal tí regal gongeil duoi.
Oi.
Ontok. Na so adopted, floor leader.
Dolmón me speaker, mang egisel motion angirági dedo blon journals, ma adborá item 5, ngari ngiágiel communication ra president, tedi vice sergi dedo wasenglasayin se supplemental budget. Yaosisiu ta men, se di information, wasengla introduce mer gi deda, se budget bill ra FY 2024. Tí regal, tia ngara departmental communication, mbanamora state communication, nou ter se resolution ra olbi ra blu blu orior. Ma direkal, adborá item 8, ngaria ngiágiel communications ra Senate, tedi vice sergi dedo wasengla ngiágiel actions de blélte, gélé lte diwan ra president, temesawo ra supplemental budget. Tí regal, vice wasese Senate tamle pasé se resolution, house joint resolution, ngiré la ah ebi draklai. Kidama lmon mra item 9, ngaria tul kamiti, reports, maqmovul pasé ra kamiti report, 11 thus 95, temesawo de se house bill 11 thus 74 thus 7.
Seegidan motion mlar shél, standing kamiti report eh na seconded. Dolitra chairman a kamiti, ngia ogorara angari malu osangaria, ah, aralala dingirá blu blu belawu, delegate tagará longun, soditea kamiti report.
Speaker, komal msaule. Tia dimo mreé da om sodéltial, tial ngara atsindargi tial, 11 thus 74 thus 7, se, standing kamiti report ra PPIUC. Tia natal dosa odengi awolawu, se ra June 19 nedu dera 11th special session. Ndimala ma liisur adel ngiré la ngiágiel gupe bira, changes ra alsheltial lulasul mola. Adimle wané liisul lo da dosa odengi mlo ngéngi. Mno otobdi ra alsheltial report, ma dalabil se, lwaya blél, ne section 6, I mean section 5. El ngiré se lwaya blél olútra, ah PPIUC il mouten mo tax exemption. Magida mlo ngéngi wasemedo otobdi, emorgo bodosisibila, esé se erangaléla ngiágiel sel bill, el kidama msaoda ngiágiel amendment ra PGST. Ya wesra report adiosisiu, mndimne ri number se, report rela se mne section 5, ngia amnesegi dede ligara tax exemption tra PPIUC. Adul otobdi emorgo change se sel sik, se ngiamle, se tóra, se imposition of a carbon tax. Emorgo number ri number ngil mo section 5. Eh otobdi seegi dede mne section 5, ngia amne ngiré la tax exemption tigea PPIUC. Eh tia report eh speaker amalblodgoma gáin msaoda ngi. Mndí agadabodo, nding laka tak ngaria ngiágiel guk kola, amna alshél msaoda tial tóra insurance, mno obiti se restriction na PPIUC. Mo diagal, mosopil guk kosi ga besel insurance, ndin diagal bol tov dedo tial clo insurance ra government ta blu blu belawu. Ongé runga tará amal gumes ngil me clo lulasunatse se. Amlo obiti seegi dede le rúr rágal ngia keap ra, tí regel anybody making ra 40,000 and above, ewadok pen ngil messtí ra na tra PPIUC wasin. Posopil set ra, abesel guk contract, el diagal ngara tuésen, it can give them an option, el guk kutmukli abesekantrocké mor den tuésen. Amne lulasul ngiré se ah, abigosa, ngah PPIUC nomtige ngil wasin, a plan se tirá blu ngara long tul, emorgoa hiringe tirá dilkeap ngira tuésen, diagal attractive mora adel, tirá ngara professional field. Aygeyá gora mle tul, mlo clo place mla ngiágiel lomlot, alsheltial lulasul mola alwasin. Mndí agadagné ra PPIUC olungasa aral aral, el mol moutra tian wariya 2025, nding ngiré lmita se certification requirement ra EQPV, eh make sure a quality aral ma mongil, el mora blu raba blabaw before any chances of the rates are implemented. Ndimne seegi de speaker, gumesen, aygeyá gora mle mo clo lulasul ma alsheltial. Eh di amnal lúr godi tia reporta seegi dedo tóra, lwaya blél sodéla mora PPIUC il mouten olúten ngil mo tax exemption. Mrdé dimne ri number otobdi seegi dede mne section 5, ngiam msaoda se. Eh kutmukli se sel sik, sel mo of fire, temesawo da imposition of a carbon tax. Seegi de speaker de, eh normal om sodéltial report, mbonorungitra ademal guk laga amendse ngara posopil deda, agan ngél adopted tia reporto.
Kumbé gogo, kumsulame de chairman, tia natal dosa odengi era before, mlsumudía ka, a question, commenter ngi, eh tí regal gongeim deda adopted tial kamiti report duoi. Ontok. Tia nga mna so adopted, floor leader.
Dolmón me speaker mrosel bira item 9, ngari ngiágiel standing kamiti report ra house joint resolution 11 thus 51 thus 11s. Maqmovul differ action utial mol moute se taimé bel tov dra ulolé.
Ilain tu'de se bilé, eh, abilé, na second reading eh maya.
Vice Speaker, tí regal seegidan motion de direkal differ de la,
Tí regal seegidan motion, eh differ action ngiri de se subject matter. Tí regal gongeil duoi. Ontok. Na so differ, floor leader.
Dolmón mbanagara item 11, A1 ngaria house bill number 11 thus, 114 thus 11, maqmovul pasé si ra first reading.
Seegidan motion, el mo pasé ra se, first reading dedi agi dede bill. Na seconded, clerk, gámu anior title.
House Bill number 11 thus 114 thus 11. Tia lulasul mola amukotmakliya luula yosangangra, fiscal year 2024. Logiwa authorization ra 111,274,779. Emo appropriate ra 99,518,779, national treasury, onmagiré la annual general operations, special revenue, madep service, budget ra blu blu belawu, mbonoréka September 3, 2024. Ma guk be birangot olom sodélt. Tia lulasul mola blél introducingi atanga kó president ra blu blu belawu, Surang Luivs Junior.
Seegida, ah, taitorabil, edibusa chairman a kamiti, mbonoritra, ah vice chairman a vice senminsa dil, guako over ngi awa dosen kyoé. Delegate ta otobdo.
Speaker komal msaule. Speaker ngwayi ngel blamtung, atschemena ra, kidra, ah vice senminsa, atanga lúrka blu oriora, angara, official trip, blonge la president. Eh speaker mang aktor ngite, aygiel goma galo mso del tia, silbora kamiti ma assign ngil mrosel kamiti ebodoror ngi. Ling mongil dongui wél, el motmola omongi weder ngi, ma claudengi dede boda kawdangi. Eh edikmoutet tial speaker de, tia nga, abiota om sodélt lulasul mola. Aygiel goma galo mso del angarseel babingela president tuludurklinbergi dede, late ringa July 11. Tia nga communication number, presidential communication number 186. Eh speaker mang akuntasé agi dedo ngil ice. Ling ngkora utuira, ngkora, ngarya kangestern ngil mortyalong rolella, atschemena mblamri gél. Se ldomes ra babingela president tuludurklinbergi dede msaoda ra, ma oderset tial annual budget. Engou ay setmul wasé, nga actrisiel tial budget regi, akadambrenasulira arsalit, mar partner gida ra blu amri gél speaker. Aldalé tial budget lulasul ngia president ngwayi se mnamuwi bra ulawol. Mm, se authorization 111,274,779. Se el kidá akongél mospe ngi. Se appropriation. Se el kidá kongél mo kudo spe ngi, ah 99, 99 million, excuse me, speaker. Speaker aygeyá gide dedo blolo ur, se 111,11 million. Aygeyá gide dedo blolo ur ngara budget. Se ltoluira ba babingela president, engou ay seegi waséka, tanga tla sa edamri gél, akasngil, ah 95,579,000. Ludowd, logiut ya agi dede lwill gidma amri gél, ya agi dede gira miral, el ma amri gél ngiré lobongela, atschemena ra vice senminsa. Amnara salita amri gél me speaker. Aygeyá gide akuntaswe, umberangal komashendi regal tará mongil actrisiel, maklungiwalé tial budget, se ldomes ngi, atanga konsinsak. Ewa ngel mlamtung speaker, tí regal ngaria ngiágiel mo actrisiel ra, ah buying power malubeng improvement, mora klo ngara aradra blu, tí regal ngara alshél, ma kura di mo do li se taitol ngi. Nogiut ya agi de, aldasu akmul wasé, ngaria 60 dollar bi weekly, el wage increase, ongos aklél a aududirarak. El across the board, el motigél adala civil service, motigél adalo contract. Lobongela blu blu belawu, lomongabelementa blu blu belawu esinsak. Aygeyá gide ayel gora klungiwalé. Eh okmongoráltu ko speaker, mbanagágal ngay, malubong meyoudangiu la, ah budget ra blu amri gél. Eka demomrute se ludude deda 20 million, ngara compact trust fund, balubeng CTF speaker. Mang ngaria avalanche, ngaria security, ngaria alternative apalmta arbasul, ngiré ya agi dede budget speaker, president ta awaldar sergi, el kidá alban ngari ngi elang. Speaker mekwa alda daal morsé. Aygeyá gide ayel gora, mri etama amadaakal mes, malubongatakal mes relaltaim. Eolngitakmamseel gora kamiti ragaw, eh gida dedo tóro daakal du swed mo singet, may imat ngi dede lini mouten mlan mongil speaker. Tukubets, mora adla, may galbalwa, kidá ader bela speaker. Solá tial.
Solá eh vice chairman de direkal, do renasulira mungur, delegate ta blu blu longtéra houseuma, senator Suminol longtéra Senate, obongela president ma Minister of Finance, brose ilmo der se hiri ngaragangulisa amri gél. Dolin msaoda, atókéra gampaké ma leme taborul ya report. Tí regal weha dedo lmon me, eh floor leader ya, sagalmuti al tial engua, ah privilege se solá o, o térgi dedo bekladh, eh welkámra, radanara galeri. Naria Abraham Osima, kidama madengiye bekladh rosin ganga speaker, ah state ra ngoralong, legislative. Ndimala gabel olding ra delegate de, ra ngoralong melding ri dedo bekladh. Eh ma té rul, ngal speaker Osima, legislative relation officer ra Minister of State. Ngaria té rul lobongel tiga di mel gora, amsovatitela legislative matters ma. Ngaria Meilin Korong, legislative relation officer. Mang ngaria Kiran Dorong administrative assistant. Tiga nga ororá Bureau of Domestic Affairs, engara engwe la Minister of State. Kodo welkámri tiré tial house of delegate, abliré la ader belawu, me goni te dedo brégráisir tiré logiwa prota. Floor leader, gámu anomta.
Dolmón me speaker, mbanagárseel item 12, bor se number 2, msaoda house bill 11 thus, 115 thus 11, maqmovul pasé se, house bill ra first reading.
Seegidan motion na seconded, clerk.
House Bill number 11 thus 115 thus 11. Tia lulasul mola amo require non-governmental organizations, community-based organizations, ma civil society organizations, and more report a bebe information, ma guktibebe rangot olom sodélt. Tia blél introducingi ya delegate Marino maroptoysel delegates.
Seegida taitol na moywe, delegate ra ngotwa.
Speaker, ah, mosubes ra interruption. Mm. Me, edelutel bakal mra kalender gi. Edesen kyoé mosel first reading. Oi, emasainer ngi edvor tial privilege se speaker. Solá rata tial speaker, sulam.
Seegil se blamu ya taitol ngi msaode ngi, gela budget, yé ngongé se unified budget. Plissamittinga presidentil duoi. Ontok. Tia nga mlamay, ah unified budget, eh asain mora kamiti ra vice senminsa. El agadamursel longerung na moywa taitol. Ma, da, dolitra, amel introduiser, delegate ra, ablura hatah overi, bol buskidá ma digedebel, obolutal babil.
Solá rata tial speaker, tia mal, biot, eh maldi tul amendment eh, mle propose ngi tial, lulasul mola speaker. Tia nga mo amender se le, existing lula, corporate registry law republic. Maldi tul amendment, aho ta amendment ra NGOs, na nonprofit organization, ra cook reporting. Ling seegi dede di galbar, clear se corporate law, ma reporting ra NGO, amo clear el, kulsi se bagél reporting, tiré se vil cook reporter mera, ah olbi, reporter mora president. Eh direkal reporter mora state governor, eh tirá ek, ngaria, ah activity conductri. Se sume, the NGO conduct activity rato overi, ngiri report mora governor rato overi, during seegi dede reporting period. Seegi gora abesel, lulasu. Ah ongé rung, se dedo wasin CBO. Se lCBO, a community-based organization, diha registered se NGO. Under se corporate law, la CBO amo non-existent. Ndimngaria CBO orgi da, aygal gachrosa community, for example, our youth, our masila aygal community, our obugula aygal community, ay tirigaya CBO. El diha nesesele NGO. Disvil conduct activity lospe akrent. Di under corporate law, eh tenali existent. Ma mo isur tirá se le create a bank account tiré. El diha sibela bangal accepter tiré, leng tirigana existent, ndiha sibela lospe akrent, leng diha le chairman. Mbanagádelisit maizer tiré ngapa tige dede abesel lulasu. Ndii, ngiril mo registered, ngiril registered a state first. Se sume tGO, I mean CBO ra tobí. Etamla ngéira aradra tóbel trúra governor, wasin tirigá tamral existent CBO ra blu. If they do so, de seegi de certification olur a state, a se vil muulma corporate registry office, et olot otí, et tirá ma register el CBO, el se vil conduct activity. When they do so, ngaria reporting tiré. De reporting tiré agal sal, mri ngelwa NGO. Simple, di gada, gadmor tiré lmo se vil, you know, terlibel gora transparent aygiel activity tiré. Ma governor se blu tirá conduct activity ngi, abol sibil mo andosten wasin. Tirigana ngar tiam, ospe ay gide dedo ludow, el, el mo conduct amral activity, tira idisela aududel kada lospe ngi. El ngal activity le conduct ngi, marisal ngi, a governor abol odé wasin, mral mit aygiel kukong tré lmo tial lulasu. Seegida gora de simple, om sodéle speaker de mslá rata.
Oi, kaboe delegate ta otobdo.
Speaker, man sotial, man sable, taqun Marino ra, ablura hatah overi. Ngakamalulubra du swem me, chairman. Eh speaker akulingit, silbora kamiti geda mouten lomés sergi. Akuringser gawe, taqun Marino komoda du, wasé kado mo recognize raya. Wasé tirigal, aladra aygal blu, ah angar. Mang asumutol ngitangas malutamlangaswe, et license by the record nice tiré malut trul ya bank account tiré, eh gido olungaseo mutamal aududir alshel se. Diti gida akulingit ngi, eh atanga chairman Marino. Se labora ataletlele la register, eh domes ngi, ke the register tiré luy tiré l, di eladra blu. Mang aygiel guk requirement ra wa bylaws ma, ah, a registrar of incorporation mankél, me guk lakadolaban lomestiré tabul, el tammal nokakaroudow. Ndidi, tedi ou ayse kuma gingar, mong gengi rka man bank agingar, eh mansibela olungaseo tiré speaker, kado recognize tiré. Mang seegi de chairman a kodi dursim sendabonge, gora asme se ié mokatakli, abang. Adilonge le chairman, malubosel bora kamiti speaker, sulam.
Tí regal gomo eh delegate ra iray.
Iltotá speaker mer gau ma vice speaker, ma acting floor leader ma arbekladh. Ah akumbrela set tiam mora kamiti. Maktirakalolngit speaker ma, a kamiti direl bolesa se guk ngia, atalangtingi latakorak le belaw ngi dede makli belaw. Le belaw makli belaw. Legal blu ah, especially blu ra iray. Ngaria aladun luktub ra iray. El ngiá civil society organizations ra blu. Aygeyá mo require el mo register, le dokiwasiu kang, ing armoriclin, ayka aladra blu. Ma kura di mle, kulingit ma sumomora kamiti, evolchigal wasé aygeyá mosopil gora mo exempt leng, tirigal alabé alavya ka, ah, akargeringir, ma ududela alabé el el mo register, ma kura di, ndi tirigel ngia, lika kumrela se silbom register obisra ezi, ngari omharaw, ngari omreport. Mang akora omes se seegi el mo hassel el mora, aygal alabé el tirá masila blu. Le aliablu ngaria alabé era clobak, ma masila blu, ma ngikarela, aygeyá gidi alabé ngara alshela blu belawu. Akura di sagalnota seegi, ma kamiti bol subise, el akabo the ludal mal mo putabordena ra, aladra blu ngiamo, omri ngel el guk mobanamalatakorasyu kangari gide speaker. Mang kulingitakamiti bol lesa seegi, mslá rata tial.
Kamsulamé, eh, delegate ra, ra ita akumising, kaboe delegate ra ngiwal, awalal sa imang.
Solá speaker, utotal gora gau ma vice speaker, acting floor leader. Acti reklol ngitseel kamitil mongorártian. Ling adomesem, ngwayi ngel blalolong ngaria ngiágsyukam aygiel bu, alablu, bol motro oktumoriya, 100,000 mora bol por report. Ngari ngi guk timi gél 5,000, 100,000, ngiá blu blagal bol, til gora 100,000 en reporte. Seegida gora di ontige speaker mslá.
Solá eh delegate ra, acti muskaeru ngume gada, gada orede.
The short speaker, ah, concern of la raise, awel taken el se aktor tiam. Eng seegi dede, gora di mla ngariyil organization ra blu, amle, mnara bagra, minder ngama se aktor tiam. Ah, ni di organization ra blu wa accept, eh exempter se mal rigorous eh process ra NGO. Mang akadre agiré lile malmobiot, mseegi dede issue blé reseniya madam Kanai speaker. Adiha blu ur, entomera aygiel dimla ngariyil NGO ra blu, mo deharsu vil exist. Kada di riliya system, but mo exist. El moriya process tiré exist. Or otherwise, se loba, arua attorney general service el mo register, et towar rau leng diha med, exist under, ya agi dede corporate law. Lesegi de corporate law, mnara close up arobu lasin. Mbanagádi openar tian, corporate law, mmo sibela accepter tiré ya agi dede, parter ya agi dede system. Solá rata tial speaker.
Acti regal, mo obongela, chairman ma arbekladé, delegate ra iray. Kumiambutenges se dedone itel mora, ah, association ra ader belawu marakuam. Emri ngela lagal bol ngaria aydir tiré. Lo tiré wasé tiga u, alabé lengaria account tiré la banka. Oi mayka, tí regal vice senmi gire dede mongil, la dres, suvum ngaria mo clo ngesa olmei. Emre system gado tonya u doude mongu. Moblega takro asen télangeso ra, akaran klél blu ngara, ay klél belawu mélngaseo ra, ah, alabé. Seegida, kada mongil mosobringi, eh berogom peisala. Kaboe delegate ra sonsorol.
Mslá ngé speaker, tial e maritutal ma arbekladé. Speaker, smodisel WA ngaral ngaal shél tial. Oi.
Olagou taptiwa?
Eh speaker, akandestendra lolgor ngia, chairman Marino ra tora transparency mo blakatacla, oriora aygal, NGOs, ngaral shél aygal blu. Speaker ndingari ngiágiel guk, go parter tial wasé, NIH pa delegate ra tovese blu clarifaringi. Aygeyá goul, aygal NGOs amo, Marshall Page 4, line 17, lmo 20. Wasé approval for grant-funded activities. Wasé ngel community-based organization may not accept a grant unless the community-based organization has obtained a letter of permission from governor of each state in which activity funded by such grant will be conducted. Gora, a kamiti bol masering, gora tital chamal mo, omri ngira, aygiel activity se no happen, asumung, because a governor a oknoda kalngéira, ah, babingira guk ya dede, guk NGO tiré. Mm, momri ngela, albol happen activities speaker, mong kamiti lomes et se, asumung guk tiré require reporting, mong tumombe activities, ndi asumu tumomla mo, okantol wasé, yes, and sub mill malagrant, ndi aga seegida gora mla mo, o begikker ngi, asumung ifam, asumung we seegida andestendinga tian eh, delegate Marino. Ma kamiti bol masen hisin, kam momasel language se wasé, kalil chamal omri ngi, el ngaria political difference ra, akuka se la aladra blu ma governoring, kalil bolakal, ngéira, ah afandra, se dede la. Ma kura di, kadi she she, se lakamiti bol masen ngi. Emixin wasé ndimos mul, ndimo ngila guk kaworging ra, aygiel NGOs ma a state. Sulam.
Sulamé, tí regal gongeim dede pasé tiala first reading deduoi. Ontok. Tial bilan na mayi, akuringser discussion ngiré mora community planning. Tia asain de gorgawe, eh delegate otobdo, malme gama la discussion, gawa in goulbringi moga. Komunmón me ngun mou tachtawun. Floor leader.
Dolmón me speaker,
Um muh me speaker, mahadlo sel three, ngari a House Bill eleven dash one one six dash eleven, ma ku bo pasi saygi de uldasu mala ra full screening.
Saygi da, motion na seconded, el pasi full screening tiaki del bill. Eh, medep sa te alela, tiang House Bill. Ta itole, kam iwi ati itole.
House Bill number eleven dash one sixteen dash eleven, tiang uldasu mala, amomlo da title twenty-three Rapala National Code, matirigil adra belaw, el mo diha kalsabiril mosenkyo leta soldaw, ngara school, tulubrior, el more, lomte era kapalment, mal uben, seera uul, el mosab, el mosabiril senkyolo giwa absentee ballot, ma kukpe birangot ulumsode, tiang beel introduction ngia deleget otobde, maru toysel delegates.
Saygi da ta itole, ma buiu, oi. Edep sa te alela, med introducer, umora, dim skida, oi. Deleget otobde.
Speaker, kamal misarati al, wa i gal blamto, wasi, pasanga, kekadebal, lungil umsode tiang uldasu mala. Speaker, muh mal blakatakl, ah, toora senkyo, mal lumalte, atoora senkyo, al dabe la, senkyo belaw, register belaw, edibus rekel belaw, mong blakatakl. A utme da la, la blue belaw, a, amkatakli say, a dal ngar rekel belaw, wasenkyo, al lumalte la senkyo, by absentee ballot. Speaker, meti al nomdasu mru rningi, amkatakli, sel domeseringi, mamneul dasu behinder ngi, ak mul wasi, kadal mo regulate, ra toora absentee ballot. Et tiang regulation, a diha do ngoi, kadi muh talom katakle melisi, sel lumalte la al dabe la, senkyo al sil belaw, ma sel lumalte la al dabe la, senkyo, raikrel belaw. So, saygi de speaker, a, aldasu, muh tekal, il, global melisi, ra toora senkyo, eh, ma i gal kar bill, a, aldasu, mo, tangarang tirgill, el mo, o, senkyo, logio absentee ballot, ma, a, a i gal al adra tir a, ngari, om se, om soldaw, om al grasku, a i kegi di, a i gal uldasu ngartian, il, proposed la, speaker, il giril la toora senkyo, giril la toora absentee ballot. Sulan tiang speaker.
Saygi da, mal umsulang, umsulang e, med introducer, te gi go ngi, bado pasi kaboe delegetra tobi.
Soha clarification, um, selbora page, sel page two, ra line sixteen, soha mo, soha chairman buh clarify say, leng saygi del wasi, he or she is physically present in the state of Sansorol or Tobi twenty days before or on the day of election. A sibel senkyo, diha kalsabel senkyo, a i al adra na sel be prior to that number of days, the disqualified, this soha clarify, clarification say.
Kaboe follow abi.
Man saule, chairman Marino. Akut, eh, saygi de language, asel existing language, eh, chairman. Dim lakadu lot, or ngi, mal lumalte ra af, ra sahut, hamalmon, diha shishiu. Kadi ul tu ni sel, goh, mosi, she. Pal sugum mong saan, indiregal saan, mar di. Saygi da, saygi da, digit mukli speaker, oi, el ang toora, oi. Mong diha alloyt, eh, al sugum ngari a aldasu ngi, selbora kamiti du du, smisi, di saygi de serail, ma teleta, do kiwi, du tu ni a di de speaker, diha almoit rumra. Sula e, ati al.
Yaga, ma lamal kataklia otobde, kaboe delegetra, bli.
Sawa, te al, e, ngiltutal mergas speaker, ma vice speaker, ma, arbecel delegates, budenge lo setia, dirga, mora kamiti, eh, mo kloa, bror rningi. Eh, di om ngi weger ngi, akura, ah, mlosa al, el loa sesel clarification, ah, uralbora kamiti, deleget otobde. Akmu bui, sel page one artian, eng wasi, sel omlo da, ulngara line twenty-one and twenty-two. Dimla blakatakl, sel ni dil registered voter, ra blue belaw, el intrebol el senkyo, logio absentee ballot, al ngar aikrel belaw. El ati al, be esel underline, be esel omlo da, ulngartian, a wasi. Nsa em, el senkyo logio absentee ballot, only if, al sugum, katartirgegi, ka niyinga ospitat, mal ubeg soldaw, al ubeg student, ngara medical referral, mal ubeg a escort. Ndi tirgegi da, subiril senkyo, logio absentee ballot, a dol tirakirtial proposed bill. Eh, tirgill be bir al adra belaw, ngar aikrel belaw. Diha kalsoldaw, diha kalsstudent, tadiki, al ra imligil kera kwam, eh, mlam mureol, luyu madr ngirak, akura di sweb, galugak om ngi weger tiang, e, deleget otobde. E abol tooi, eng la giril, mong araw guru, mong mosabiril mesenkyo. Eh, leng, it says, page one, the registered voters em senkyo logio absentee ballot, only if, om taraygegi di. Edika, lemlemi tiang tiginik. Agi mle member, kankantu, eh, madam Kanai. Adi mle imol omlo da, al sel sel constitution, ra tiginila senkyo, a say, voting shall be by absentee ballot. El uldasu intent behind that, a wasi, kamgarang eruli, mong mabeo tra al dabe la, ngar aikrel belaw, senkyo. Ah, aldaso, a say, kamgarang enhance, improve, er saygi del opportunity, ngartian, page one, wasi fundamental right, ra al dabe la, el senkyo. Ah, additionally, to wasi, umsel debora absentee ballot, eng, diha di bo lakado ngola igal, muklo bak, sel altoira al adra mosenkyo, nsa bedel progress, du regel mo explore, ta tiginila, digitize voting. Aknarskuran amrigel, e, kera dorme, deleget Marino. Ngar ngia, students il gimda al kerti al dorm, sel volt emela senkyo amrigel, etadino aden warti, ngar ngia password protecto del ballot through sel state del kergi, eh, senkyo. Men diha di il protector, a i gal lit atula, toora senkyo, ada, adu muur, ma adu gran. En sure opportunity, mora arbecel al dabe la. El ngar aikrel belaw, el subiril senkyo. Lo tirakli saygi del ngartian, wasen fundamental right, ra al adra blue belaw, el moloi morir. Ra i gal, sa bedel udu ul, el teletele la senkyo. El logi ngi, eh, mo participate tiang election process ra, a blue belaw. Akti regel, tabungil wasi, the limitations that appear here, il dimo, specific al adra, subiril senkyo. Ikar dirigel, selbora kamiti, e, bodondas, wasi, ar ngal grasku, mar soldaw, ah, subiril muh be, mngadngod, al adra lem akli. Soldaw, most stationed elsewhere, e, britelal bui, e, britelara. Al ngal grasku, la ngara UOG, transfer, el kukmorgel, shenza addressirti. Tirgill ke auror, a i gal gi del, el blue, ngar aikrel belaw, reachable, sa edel mustri ra opportunity, senkyo. A ke auror, ah, a ke in their own home, residencesirtir, apartment, el truy raq, luy raq. Sel te al, el mustri ra opportunity, senkyo is greater, I think, ra om limit, rningi, mo di tirgage. Sawa, te al, speaker, e, ak budenge wasi, a, chairman otobde, ma, el kamiti, mong mesit tiang, ah, mong kadlad, a i ge gi del consideration, say, gutmokun, mal mongil pasur. Sulan ati al.
Kaboe delegetra otobde.
Speaker, akmal didoen, mahal, a i gal, tokoil blal du, atakul, umetaro ra blue ra imlig, amral tooi. Speaker, mesera dorur tiang reede, kadal mahal negargikl, el mul wasi, al lumalte la al dabe la, senkyo, a diha kagegi del duli tiang la, al mutumeli. Mong ngari a, a legal research, mal legal opinion, milketmok, el kutmakli tiang uldasu, mosabel tov, ekadmalmon, protectra, al lumalte la af. Me kadi ngadi example, eh, speaker, a i ga, akadu kadi discuss, selbora kamiti, akamiti, mong mesi, rokulujon, il support ra aldaso, mal ube, eng, mu otia, amar sila aldaso. Um, ngar ngia laal, ulbi, milketmok, mi RPL six dash fifty, tiang asel ongelul, mal olville speaker, ah, year two thousand three, tiadi example uspea rniye. Milketmok, el mul wasi, tirgill al dabe boh senkyo ra general, amo muh tank clear registration. Mong loai say, ngari tirgill kukno diha kboh senkyo, emil muh tank clear. Mong, et, emlo metiger ngir, kusin, diha kalsabela, la al momel mal, saygi del lumalte la al senkyo. Alsoan senkyo, eng senkyo, al atil senkyo, ndiha senkyo. Di la, diha kboh ulup, taringi, leng lumalte la al dabe la. Physical presence, senkyo, absence, sen absentee ballot, I mean, al ngar aikrel belaw. Mesera RPL seven dash fifty, two thousand eight, etamlo korrekt rningi, tamlo repile sel la, al imta al basura, utmelala. A i kegi dakura reksi ra, au, aurior mal la, sil rule, el momri riora, al lumalte la af. Eh, et tiang dorur ngi, ah, ngari a domeseringi, ma i gal konson, sel raise, umetaro, mar valid. Ndi selbora kamiti, e, bodomesi, a i gal be bir justification ra uldasu, eng matakliya, a perspective ballot, mong wasin edel giril speaker. A i kegi dakura dior das, e, welcome, mal ngil uldasu, a i gal, luduswela, tangakul, umetaro, brimeli. Olungit, umselbora kamiti, speaker, ekadal mutemelisi rningi, edesa klungi alal, e, edadmakli, sel mongil, mora, atadra, abrigo las speaker. A i kegi dakura di, sawa lo das, speaker, as an introducer, sulan ati al.
Delegetra Kanai.
Sulang speaker, al mutal tarate al, mahal, mral le well note, da i gal ngia, mral, il, giredel malabdeba, el, tiang, lulgoya delegetra imlig. Mong, ang di sawa, dimo edel wasi, eh, main introducer, and of course, ngakamle saile tiang, kadal mral kor a omes ra, a wasi, boh sibel, el momel mal, tarukul tooi. Di, ak madengela setia mora kamiti, mka me, al sumo ar a kamiti, dirigel boh sibela kamiti, mo, old ta i gal ngia kor a, likumese sel page one, er saygi del kor a, mal mol, mal ngara fundamental rights, eh, wasi, and all residents of Palau should have confidence in fair and transparent election. Mong koradi sawa, den, mong mesi, a i ge gi del wasi, ngari ngia, mladilub, el, el ngia diha al fair, mal uben trans, mal, kor a, mal mal, telteele la toora senkyo. Mal wars, edel mong madengela, likumra, nasel sumo moveist, a i ge gi del information, eh, ak mahal momelisi, rtiangandi, nga kasi, kukundusyo kasi, ang giredel, mokiwa majority, ang giredel, losi karolel, omdo isap, or populated, ra blue belaw, kadal muh togal af, muh toisal af, mong mosabedel ngil, tiang, al dabe moro obisel ngia, amil ngiltra, batok la af. Mong, ndi kadal makasai, al dabe, mong kadal mral, giredel koramnamo, mru ru, eh, eh, wasisi, make sure wasi, al ngalgi, al dabe la, roku ya involva ra, ah, umsode la blue ri, let tirganga, unbatangara outside, a dirigel ngari a mral moktegeri ngi, ndi, a inol, wasi, atraklasi, etamegairire, mong. Akura di, akulingit, naselbora kamiti, lutalman, mong mesi, a i ge gi di, el mosabel, el, meski, saygi del, mral kor a, ngiltmon, al ol wesel wasi, ngar, mral, malu ul, kadal ma amru ra watiang, el, el mo, wa i saygi del koram, alimit ra, ar adra mo, o giril ngara fair, in transparent election, al ngari amneul, amneul, kadal ma amru wa i say. Sula e, speaker, ati al.
Kaboe delegetra, ngal alongel, busunsorol. Speaker, man saule, dimomre, dada domes, atemel, kor a, tamal di mal budula eleven. Ah, ngar di dirigel, umdasu, umswada, matakli tiang, al saygi del tokoil only, asel confusa, ah, akmudi tirgage, ya sabil senkyolo gi absentee ballot. Mong swada, make sure, albora kamiti, boh katmakla wari, make sure tirgall be biri gi del residing outside of Palau, will continue to have the same, ah, selgi del numbers, numbers, the privilege to vote, logio absentee ballot. Mwila intent tiang uldasu mala, di sawa boh, matakli, ndiha, sawa confuse anyone with the word only. Lu time boh interpret rningi, wasi, ndi tirgage, ya sabil ngar absentee ballot. Posabil, matakli, dirigel, kamiti, boh, mong mesit tiang, even necessary, dil da li ra, alsel, wasen tirgill, al dabe la, residing outside of Palau, will also fall under this only, wasin, nsa biril senkyolo gi absentee ballot. Sulas speaker. Sula, kaboe delegetra, sonsorol.
Ati al, agene, speaker. Oi, malakpadi, akagil betekra, lo, sawa de saygi del part, atagat, toobi, makpaman, lungi, loma, meseringi, mak, tiang laa, tiang ngaram, mal di specific claim, loma sawa, sonsorol, matobi, makpaman, losmo, di, makkor. Oi, tiang ngaram, dakasabel di, general speaker, maro bul, adukmal, specific claim, sawa, sonsorol, matobi. Oi, mong, kai di del wasi, it's already existing, among, still, ndiha understand rningi. Eh, speaker, ah, kamiti lo mesit tiang, while we're on this topic, dirigel, lo shishiu, concern with the delegetra imlig. Kada dirigel, lo mesra, leng malbatoka, problem, tiang absentee, delegetra imlig, gi damadengel waseng, either, mal mio, the receive a, babingera, tiaguk, kada di kera outside. Mong, mo endape, senkyo tir a, mlam omera accounting, eh, tiram a receiver, babingera, mong i ga kapa, be bira problem, mal ngari, ma kamiti, go lo mesing sing, lo ral, lo bongela election, wasi, tiang, makada improve rningi, ma i gi, a i gal request del may, amre del tov, amre del may, instill a problem, ra, ever since. Eh, mal tokar, mlammo, blu sel mail, gamplinen, ngarama gimla requesti, eh, dirigal may, mla lengla, accounting, e, amam tiang a receiver, ngi, matiadi outu telil. Mong kamiti lo mesit say, wa isel, lolgor ngil waseng, kadal ba i giredel, melisi, eh, a i gal kuk lumalte la al senkyo, eh, provider saygi del wa, unil ra el, mbiot ra el, amre ede, eng, eng garantil, counta, senkyo ra al dabe tir a, mal ngar ngir, soris senkyo. Lam toka requesti, eh, mal momio de, ma kamiti lo mesi, kadal el, selbela, aurior lo bongela election, eh, improve saygi del part, speaker, umsula.
Kaboe delegetra.
Sulan tiang, speaker, edibo class, speaker, ndiha, alswedel, rulila laal, amen daan institution. Tiang, toora absentee, a, ngara institution. Umdasu, a, amen introducer, amlaria, intention rningi, improve ra toora absentee. Ratsol, makulungit, ulbora kamiti, lo meseringi, ndiha, alswedel, ngua, wa i gal, mlam sawa, ra ulala, tiang, sel motoa, alad, amen daan institution, rgi del giril absentee. Saygi de speaker, a, di sawa, seli, lobonged, ma, kamiti, boh lungil musang, mal ngani, al, bor, ah, urabatalel, tiang laal, mo improve, sel exist, toora absentee, el boh ngi, ndi kuk, osengegeri ngia, a say ga exist. Sibel al adra nga militarir, el altame, ape, apply absentee. Senkyo, duru absentee, maharam, boh lungil musang, mal ngani, improvement, el mortelek, existing ra toora absentee, ngar ewel, a, a guidance, a, institution, el boh meru. Boh, al, be, second reading, boh lungil musang, eh, boh, a, uduswedel giril speaker. E, bayol ngit, mal mergo stoba, discussion, e, mergo, eh, senkyo, ngura full reading, e, du bon, sulan tiang.
Te gi go ngi, il pasi tiang bira full reading, du oi, ontok. Tiang bilan, mlam ngaera full reading, ya asain, el, mora chairman of Foreign Affairs, tiaki da ul, kadal misaoda, al dabe la, ngar aikrel belaw. Do stemongi, el mora chairman of Foreign Affairs, msebel, mo klotel, el moto, demora kwam, a i gal be bir blue. Pero, turra, damrigel, lo mododurra, no gera belaw. Floor leader.
Asel dol mol, mal ngara, kadal ma mregera, sel full reading, mahadlo mora second reading. Kadal mor sel House Bill number eleven dash seven four dash seven, et tiang bladongari port, eh, speaker. Ma ku boh, pasi saygi del.
Saygi da motion, malar tiang bira sel reading, et tiang, mregabala, discussion rningi, twice. Te gi go ngi, bado pasi ngi, ra sel reading, du oi, ontok. Tiang mlam ngaera, sel reading, kler, asain, ab, malgora, adra lam, lutod, di, for a good reading. Floor leader.
El laal mora, item thirteen, eng, misaoda resolution calendar, mong ngari a, House Joint Resolution Number eleven dash five seven dash eleven, ma ku boh, adapt the saygi de resolution, speaker. House Joint Resolution Number 11-57-11, we will adapt the resolution, Speaker.
Oh. Sir, Please, I am here, Floor Leader.
Speaker, I am here, I am here, I am here. Refer to the House Joint Resolution 11-57-11, as I mentioned.
Sir, I am here, I am here.
House Joint Resolution Number 11-57-11, the House Joint Resolution, I am here, President, I am here, National Relocation Committee, but most select identify out, we are in the area of security, we are in the area of security. We will introduce you, Delegate, Kanai, we will talk about it.
We will talk about it, because I am here, because I am here. Because we are here, Floor Leader.
Because we are here, Speaker, we will differ the House Joint Resolution 11-51-11.
We will differ, because we will make a clear decision, because we will make a clear decision. On top, because I am here, I am here. Sir, Please. At the time, Floor Leader, I am here, 11-10, because I am here, 11-12, because I am here. And we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, 12 years, because we are in the area of security. And we are in the area of security, we are in the area of security. We will make a clear decision, because we are in the area of security. Suspend the rules, order of business, we will vote, because we are in the area of security. We will make a clear decision, because we are in the area of security. We will make a clear decision, because we are in the area of security. We will make a clear decision, Floor Leader.
Speaker, we will suspend the rules, order of business, because we are in the area of security. Because we are in the area of security. We will make a clear decision, because we are in the area of security. The podium, because we are in the area of security. We will make a clear decision, because we are in the area of security.
We will make a clear decision, because we will make a clear decision. On top, because I am here, I am here. I am here, Senator Basilius, we are here, Delegate, we are here, eight, nine, ten. We are in the area of security. We will make a clear decision, because we are in the area of security. Because we are in the area of security, we will make a clear decision, because we are in the area of security. We will make a clear decision, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, we are in the area of security. We will, I will, I will, I will, because we are in the area of security. The special, Teal, we will form the Delegate, we will form the Delegate. We will ask the room, we will ask the room, because we will make a clear decision. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. Because we will make a clear decision, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. At the time, I am here, Senator Basilius, Senator Basilius, we will make a clear decision, because we are in the area of security. Delegate, Senator Basilius.
Speaker, my friend, Speaker, we are in the area of security. Because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. Because we are in the area of security, we will make a clear decision, because we are in the area of security. The House of Delegates, the Delegate, the delegate, the delegate, the delegate. We are in the area of security. I am here, because I am here, I am here, I am here, I am here, I am here. I am here, because I am here, because I am here. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We will make a clear decision, because we are in the area of security. We will make a clear decision, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We will make a clear decision, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security.
We are here, I am here, I am here. So, I am here, I am here, I am here. We are in the area of security, because we are in the area of security. Because I am here, because I am here. I am here, because I am here. Because we are here, because we are here. 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 Delegate, I am here.
Speaker, I am here, because I am here.
Good, Delegate.
Speaker, I am here, because I am here. I am here, because I am here. Because I am here, I am here, I am here. Oh, yes, I am here, because I am here. I am here, because I am here. Oh, yes, I am here, because I am here. We are here, because we are 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 here. Senator Basilius, he, who made the invitation, the Speaker, he will make a decision. He will make a decision, because we are here. We will make a clear decision, because we are here. For me, I am here, because I am here. We will make a clear decision, because we are here. We are here, because we are here. We are here, because we are here.
Sula, I am here, I am here. We are here, because we are here. Speaker, I am here, because I am here. Because we are here, Speaker, I am here, because I am here. We are here, because we are 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 here. Senator Basilius, Speaker, I am here, because I am here. I am here, because I am here. Welcome. I am here, because I am here. 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 Speaker, I am here, because I am here. 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 We will make a clear decision, because we will make a clear decision.
I am here, because I am here.
Sula, Teal, Speaker, Speaker, I am here, because I am here. Uh, good, Delegate, I am here, because I am here. We are here, because we are here. I am here, because I am 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 here. Because we are concerned, because we are concerned. I am here, because I am here. I am here, Speaker, I am here, because I am here. 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 I am here, because I am here.
Sula, good, Delegate.
Sula, Delegate, I am here, because I am here. I am here, because I am here. I am here, because I am here. Because I am here, because I am here. Three terms, I am here, I am here. I am here, because 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 I am here. Because I am here, because I am here. 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 We see all the best, because I am here. I am here, 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 because I am here.
Sula, Teal, Speaker. Sula, Delegate, I am here, I am here. Good, Delegate.
Speaker, I am here, because I am here. Delegate, I am here, Speaker. Because I am here, because I am here. 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 And I congratulate you, because I am here, because I am here. I am here, because I am here. I congratulate you, because I am here. Because I am here, because I am here. 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 Uh, I congratulate you, because I am here. Uh, I congratulate you, because I am here. I congratulate you, because I am here. I congratulate you, because I am here. I am here, because I am here. I congratulate you, because I am here. Again, congratulations, because I am here. Sula, Speaker, Teal.
Sula. Good, Delegate.
Sula, Speaker, I am here, because I am here. I am here, because I am here. Because I am here, because I am here. Because I am here, because I am here. 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 Frequent communication, because I am here. Because I am here, because I am here. I congratulate you, because I am here. Because I am here, because I am here. I congratulate you, 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 because I am here. Because I am here, because I am here. I congratulate you, because I am here. I congratulate you, because I am here. I congratulate you, because I am here.
Sula, Speaker. Good, good, Delegate.
Sula, Speaker, I am here, Senator Basilius.
Speaker, I think the speaker is very good. I think the speaker is very good. I think the senator Basilius is a member of the House. I think the speaker is very good. 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 Senator Basilius congratulates the senator. He is successful in his work. I think.
I think the speaker is very good. I think the former delegate of the House, Basilius, is very good. I think the delegates are very good. I think the resolution of the House is approved. I introduce the delegates. I think the delegates are very good. 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 I think the history is good. I think the history is good. I think the history is good. I think the senator, the senator, he is very good. I think he is very good. He has a black belt for 12 years. Okay? I think he is very good.
Floridians.
The speaker is very good. I think the speaker is very good. I think the speaker is very good. I think the speaker is very good. Information and the national news.
I think the delegates are very good.
I think the national news is all announced. I think the speakers are very good. I think the national news is in June 22, 2003. I think the P I E C, Pacific Island Environmental Conference, is in August 1st and August 4th. The deadline of registration is 21st. I think the speakers are very good. 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 The conference, the Q P B, has been involved. At the beginning, I think the speakers are very good. I think the speakers are very good. I think the speakers are very good before the deadline. I think the announcement by the speakers is two one. I think the Blue Ocean Seminar, which will conduct an expert joint, expert of the House, at Taiwan. I think the speakers are in Maoyong, Laos, 21st. I think the Blue Carbon Research, Coral Reef Resilience, Climate Change, and Development of Carbon Credit Market. I think the speakers are very good. I think the speakers are very good. I think the speakers are very good. Last, I think the speakers are very good. Maritime Climate Change and PA Protected Area. I think the Marine Law, 27th next week, 12:00 AM. I think the members of the Maoyong Committee are very good. I think the Marine Law, for this purpose. I think the Marine Law is very brief. I think the operation is good. I think the monitor of the House is good. I think the relationship between the House and the representative of the House. I think the representative of the House is very good. I think the representative of the House is very good. Do they receive those? Do they have information? Last, I think Fish and Wildlife Protection is under the Marine Law. Fish and Wildlife Protection, I think the Penn Site Conservation is a state. I think the Penn Site is a state. I think the site information is good. I think the speakers are very good. I think the speakers are very good.
I think the delegates are very good.
I think the speakers are very good. The chairman of the Marine Corps is very good. He has scheduled meetings. I think the speakers are very good. 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 I think the speakers are very good.
The delegates are very good. Speaker, I think the delegates are very good. Speaker, I think the delegates are very good. The president has signed the signature, statement, our P P L 11-21. The supplemental petition to the Chairman of the United States. I think the speakers are very good. Speaker, I think the chairman of the Board of Directors, I think the meeting is July 1st, August 1st. I think the speakers are very good. 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 I think the speakers are very good.
I think the speakers are very good.
I think the speakers are subject to call. The delegates are very good. Speaker, I think the speakers are very good. 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 I think the speakers are very good.
I think the speakers are very good. I think the speakers are very good. I think the speakers are very good. Whether official or private, I think the speakers are very good. 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 We have the first shot edit. I think the speakers are very good. I think the speakers are very good. I think the speakers are very good.
Floridians.
The speaker is very good.
After the motion, the speakers are subject to call. I think the speakers are very good. Please.